We acknowledge that the Etana Kirkland Lake is located in the traditional territories of the Cree and Algonquin peoples and other indigenous people. Whose presence continues to enrich our vibrant community today. Meeting called to order, we'll have a moment of silence. A motion to approve the agenda. Go ahead.
Thank you, your worship, and through you to council. I have a, I have a motion here, moved by councillor Eugene Ivanoff. Seconded by councillor Stacey White. Be resolved at the agenda for the regular meeting of council held on February 1st, 2022, beginning at 4:40 PM. Be approved as amended to include item 6.9 verbal update on COVID-19.
All in favor? Motion carried? Declare.
Mister Mayor, it appears you're on mute.
Unmute. Okay. Declaration of pecuniary interest? None noted. Petitions and delegations? None noted. Acceptance of minutes and recommendations? 5.1.
I think we're experiencing a little bit of, uh. I might just have Jen, the new clerk here, we're just trying to figure it out. Bear with us. Okay, I gotta thank Jen, I think we fixed it. We'll move on here. So I do have a motion for acceptance of the minutes, moved by councillor Rick Owen, seconded by councillor Lad Shaba. Be resolved that council approve the minutes of the following meetings. Minutes of the regular meeting of council held January 11th, 2022. Minutes of the economic development meeting held June 2nd, 2021. Minutes of the museum advisory committee meeting held on October 20th and November 17th, 2021. Minutes of the library board meeting held November 25th, 2021. And minutes of the TPR committee of management meeting held on November 29th, 2021.
You're muted, Mayor.
Yeah, I clicked that again. All in favor? Motion carried? Reports of municipal officers and communications, 6.1 signing authority policy.
Okay, I'm gonna take that one, I'll speak to it quickly. We've had a few new hires over the last little bit. Tonight, we have Jen Montre, which is our clerk, being added on to the signing authorities. You will see a bylaw later adding her on as the, appointing her as the clerk. And we, we, we've added her on and we, just to let you know, we will be having another one probably at our next meeting, because we do have a CEO starting as well. I do have a motion here, so. I'll just ask if anybody has any questions or anything first.
None noted?
I have a motion moved by councillor Casey Owens, seconded by councillor Eugene Ivanoff. Be resolved that the memorandum number 2022 CLK 002 entitled signing authority policy be received. That the updated signing policy is approved and that staff be directed to insert the updated signing authority policy into the corporate policy manual.
All in favor? Motion carried? Item 6.2 amendment of the crossing agreement with Ontario Northland Communication or Transportation and Commission. Jim Roman?
Thank you, your worship, through you to council. This one is fairly straightforward. At the November 2nd meeting, council passed a bylaw. Authorizing the agreement with the ONTC to place a sewer line underneath railway tracks at Swastika. This is part of our Swastika Forest Main project. Upon review, we found that it would be advantageous to relocate this crossing 10 meters closer to Highway 66 than initially proposed. And so what's required is an amendment to the agreement with the ONTC. There is no additional cost. So it's, it merely requires approval and signature. So I'm recommending that bylaw be presented, authorizing air clerk to execute this amending agreement. If there's any questions, I can certainly answer them.
None noted, we have a motion. Go ahead, Sean. We have a motion.
I have a motion moved by councillor Lad Shaba, seconded by councillor Rick Owen. Be it resolved that report number 2022 PW01 entitled amendment to underground pipe crossing agreement with Ontario Northland Transportation Commission, ONTC be received? And that staff be directed to present a bylaw to authorize the mayor and clerk to execute an amending agreement to the existing underground pipe crossing agreement with the ONTC.
All in favor? Motion carried? Item 6.3, report to accept wastewater by contract. Jim Roman?
Thank you, your worship, through you to council. I'm presenting this to council strictly as a source of additional revenue for the town. Right now, our sewage treatment plant, our brand new sewage treatment plant runs at about 75% capacity. And we're expecting this to climb to approximately 80% capacity once the Swastika Forest Main is up and running. So this, this provides us still with, with some unused capacity that is available to be sold out to contractors wishing to, to dump at, at our sewage treatment plant. So I'm proposing that we establish a process in the standard contract for accepting wastewater at the sewage treatment plant. And this process should include means verifying the source of the material as well as the material itself. Establish standard operating procedures and billing procedure. And then proposing that we charge five cents an imperial gallon for local source wastewater and six cents an imperial gallon for wastewater generated outside of town limits. And on top of this, there's a 15% administrative cost being proposed as well. So I can answer any questions regarding this.
None noted? We have a motion?
I have a couple of questions.
Oh, okay. Didn't see your hand.
Oh, sorry.
Okay, go ahead.
Okay, thanks, Jim. My first question is how competitive these rates that you're giving us compared to maybe other municipality of our size? And the second question is, so we'll get this 50,000 to 60,000 revenue that you, you are estimating. Would that money go towards capital improvements in the wastewater treatment plant or would that money just go into the general pot? Thank you.
To answer your first question, these prices were, um. I, I, I didn't look at other municipalities, I based this on historical, um. Price which, which the town did charge going back 10 years. There was a similar situation where a mining camp had asked to dispose of wastewater at the plant. And we were charging them three cents an imperial gallon. So the prices that I've arrived at counts somewhat for inflation and certainly there's a definite, like it more than adequately recovers any costs, additional costs that the plant's going to see. In terms of, uh. Okay, your second question, I would say that these funds are merely being introduced into the water and wastewater budget and not, it, it can be directed towards capital improvement. That's something that, that council would wish to do. Otherwise, it's strictly revenue as any other charge.
Councillor Owen?
Yes, thank you, your worship. I have a couple of questions for Jim. With spring runoff and everything, that the extra pressure that's put on the plant at that time of year. Does it still have enough capacity to take on contracts as well? And secondly, have we had any inquiries? For this service or is this just, we're putting it in place so it's there in case we do get inquiries? Thank you.
Okay, with regards to overflow situations, we would have control certainly over when this stuff can be introduced into the waste stream. So certainly if there was a surcharge event, we, we would not accept wastewater at that time. We would ask that the contractors hold off until we were able to receive it. Now, for the second question, we've been approached by a couple of local contractors. They have, um. There's, there's a number, number of scenarios actually where, where we could begin accepting wastewater. One of them would be for the Kirkland Gold itself, KL Gold, which until we get their water and sewer line in place, they're, they're dumping to a holding tank, which, which a contractor is dealing with at his site, but running into capacity issues. So we've been approached by the contractor to see if the town would accept it. There are also other, other places that have, two, two that I can think of that come to mind that have approached us as well. These are, these are businesses located outside of town limits, which is why I'm proposing a separate fee for non-local sources. But certainly there's three or four of these contracts which we could put into place right now.
Thanks, Jim. Thank you. Any other questions? We have a motion?
Yes, we have a motion moved by councillor Casey Owens, seconded by councillor Eugene Ivanoff. Be resolved that the memorandum number 2022 DV003M entitled potential, oh, sorry, I'm on the wrong one. I went over the next page. So I'm gonna go back, sorry about that. Moved by councillor Stacey White, seconded by councillor Casey Owens. Be resolved that report number 2022 PW02 entitled accepting wastewater by contract at the Kirkland Lake Sewerage Treatment Plant be received? And that staff be directed to obtain formal approval from the Ministry of Environment, Conservation and Parks for the acceptance of wastewater by contract at the Kirkland Lake Sewerage Treatment Plant from both local and non-local sources. That staff establish a process and standard contract for accepting wastewater by contract, including a means of material and source verification, standard operating procedures and billing procedures and billing. That schedule A to bylaw 21048 be amended to include a fee per gallon of wastewater disposed of at the Kirkland Lake Sewerage Treatment Plant as follows. Disposal of wastewater local source at five cents per imperial gallon plus 15%. And non-local source at six cents per imperial gallon plus 15%.
All in favor? Motion carried?
Thank you.
Thank you. Item 6.4, potential locations for subdivision, Jenna McNaughton, planning administrator.
Good evening, thank you, your worship, through you to council. I'm here to talk to you guys about potential subdivision locations. So this was a request from council back in August. So over the past few months, we looked through many, many documents and reviewed a lot of old stuff that we have and reviewed a lot of the provincial policies and growth plan for Northern Ontario. So what we have is, the town owns a lot of vacant land. Currently, we do have 47 lots that are listed on our surplus land list. And we do have some areas that are designated as residential in our official plan in the zoning bylaw, including some subdivisions that have been surveyed out, but they never finalized or come to a full conclusion. So we have identified seven areas in our attachment one. I had, I also had an opportunity to reach out to DSAB as well, as they do have some residential land. At this time, they're not interested in going forward with preparing any plans for that. However, the, the door is always open for us to talk to them, they've always been very willing to have that conversation. There is some, there's also some private property that appears that it could have a lot of subdivision development or maybe multiple lots. So that's something that we can also take a look at if council's desirous. So in regards to the, the attachment one with the seven areas, we did prioritize them and we chose the first two that are in the attachment that staff felt was more feasible based on the location, the ease of servicing, the greatest potential of lots and the ability to actually develop it in phases. So we are, staff are recommending that we would engage with a consultant to provide us with like a pre-feasibility study relating to what the probable cost would be. We'd recommend that it would be prioritized for one or two areas, preferably the two that we, we were looking at. But it is up to council what, which areas we look at. And we would want to include that any reports we receive includes all of the, the costs that could be associated with installing servicing. You know, the roads, curbs, street lighting. And then just developing it, do we need to blast, do we need to bring in fill, stuff like that. So we're just hoping that we can get something to give us a, a good idea of how much everything will cost. On another note, we did, staff did sit in on a training session with the Ministry of Municipal Affairs and Housing. And the discussion was related to CIPs and focusing on economic development. However, but it was also talking about housing and like residential development. So staff, we, we sat down and we kind of thought about it and we thought maybe there could be a potential to look at our current CIP and maybe add some stuff about the commercial businesses that are downtown that have residential above as they're, they do fall in our CIP area, but maybe there's something that we could look at in the CIP to provide funding to enhance or just upgrade those residential units within that area. I think that's kind of everything in a nutshell, but I am happy to look at any of those particular sites. If anybody wants to review one in particular, if you just have general questions, I'm happy to answer whatever.
Noted.
Councillor Ivanoff has his hand waving, Mayor Kylie.
I can't, I can't see him, go ahead councillor Ivanoff.
Ah, no problem. Jenna, is there an appetite for lots right now, is there somebody looking for lots? Is there, uh, have you been approached by people who are looking for a bunch of building sites? Or is this, or are we just preliminary and if this ever happens and we have the option of going ahead with this?
Um, it, it does come up where people do ask about lots. Typically, the lots that we have on our surplus land list are too small for what people want. So for example, the lots over on callback Balsam, the most recent one, we ended up selling two of the lots, the past two. Because they wanted their lots larger. So that tends to be something where people are looking at larger lots. And also our official plan does state that we're supposed to have a certain amount of lots or subdivisions ready to go or in the, the development stages, should somebody come in and need it. So at this time, no, not really seeing a lot of requests, but it, it does happen.
Yeah. Thank you.
Any other comments?
Councillor White's waving, Mayor Kylie.
Councillor White?
I certainly think this falls under the heading of forward thinking. Even though the demand's not there today, it's not to say that it won't be here tomorrow. So I'd 100% be in favor of moving forward with the motion.
Any other comments? None noted, we have a motion to receive.
I have a motion moved by councillor Casey Owens, seconded by councillor Eugene Ivanoff. Be resolved that the memorandum number 2022 DEV 003M entitled potential locations for a subdivision be received? And that staff be directed to prepare a request for a proposal to engage with a professional planning consulting firm or consultant to create a pre-feasibility study and opinion of probable cost relating to development of residential blocks of land. And the staff be directed to report back with a proposed framework for a housing strategy, including proposed amendments to the community improvement plan.
All in favor? Motion carried? Item 8.5. Community Improvement Plan application recommendation. Will Hoss, Director, Economic Development.
Thank you, through you, your worship. At the recent Economic Development Advisory Committee meeting, we brought forward three applications for the funding under the Community Improvement Plan. One was for 48 Government Road West, that was 50% of eligible costs for the building renovations as well as for 50% of facade improvements. Also, there was an application brought forward from the Curling Club for 44 Water Lane, 50% of eligible costs for building renovations. And lastly, 50% of eligible costs for building renovations at 98B Government Road West, that is the LaSalle Theater. Recommendation from the committee was that they be approved as shown in your report.
Certainly nice to see that the, the old Kreske building has been rejuvenated from the outside. It looks great and it's the first thing you see coming downtown. So I'm in favor of supporting these requests as well. Any other comments? Do we have a motion to approve?
Yes, I have a motion moved by councillor Lad Shaba, seconded by councillor Stacey White. Be resolved that the report number 2022 DV004 entitled Community Improvement Plan Application Recommendations Economic Development Committee be received and that council approve funding for 50% of eligible costs, not to exceed $5,000 for building renovations. And approval of funding for 50% of eligible costs, not to exceed $5,000 for facade improvements for 48 Government Road West. That council approve funding for funding 50% of eligible costs, not to exceed $5,000 for building renovations at 44 Water Lane. And that council approve funding for 50% of eligible costs to a maximum of 2,500 for building renovations at 98B Government Road West.
All in favor? Motion carried? Item 6.6, Community Improvement Plan update, Welford?
I think my computer is getting a life of its own, it's turning itself on and off here. My apologies, I'll keep an eye on it, I hope I don't interrupt it again. Under the Community Improvement Plan guidance document, we wanted to provide council with an annual update. The first applications came in at the beginning of COVID and COVID basically brought everything to a standstill in 20 and 2021. So rather than reporting on very little, I, I thought I would wait until we get to the, a full year of activity. The report outlines what has been spent in what areas, what has not been spent. It also outlines some of the concerns that have been brought forward and comments from the business community as well as what we have as staff. The intent is not to suggest that the CIP has to be redone. In fact, it's working quite well within its current context and it is very heavily used by, well, heavily used, it is primarily used by the small business community. And that's, I think, a good thing because given the whole COVID situation, that's a little bit of support that we can offer. I think keeping it on course as it is right now is the best recommendation. I think that there are opportunities for the CIP to be revisited, perhaps in a year or so. I lined out, uh, uh, outlined some ideas that we see other communities bringing forward. Ms. Jenna McNaughton did mention some of those, including housing and that. The community, or sorry, the Economic Development Advisory Committee not as fond of branching into residential. Part of that reflects, there could be other tools too that the town may want to look at and make sure that they're in alignment. One example would be when we sell a piece of property and we have a 50% bonus on it effectively. Well, you don't want to double that up with the CIP. Also, it could be that we could tailor things better so that the CIP, if there's any changes like that, are more focused on local businesses. Specifically, those businesses in the downtown that have residential up above the main floor. But also recognizing it would be very expensive for them to reconstitute those living spaces. But nevertheless, there was our some ideas and we are seeing it being implemented in other communities. We say that for the next year, we keep an eye on it, see how it's working out. Are the amounts significant enough to make a difference? That was one concern that was voiced. Another concern that suggests council look at, we have the CIP applying to specific areas in town. It covers almost all the business areas, that's not a problem. But Kirkland Lake being a mining town, you have stuff popped up that has popped up everywhere. And they do have enterprises that engage in commercial activity, even though their focus may be more social. So I'm thinking, oh, for example, Riverside Church, right? They have a daycare, they are running effectively a business, but they're in open or open institutional, so they're not eligible. So is that something that we want to look at? Right? Other terms could be some changes. Could be some changes with the amounts. Um, I reference the tax incentive program, show us twenty-five thousand dollars worth of improvements. Or uh, uh, that, that's hard. That's very difficult to do. And I think in Cochrane, I think it's down to five hundred or something like that now. So anyway, those are just some tweaks, as well as some more major adjustments that I would suggest. Council keep an eye on and perhaps in a year or so, we can bring them back for consider, uh, for consideration.
Uh, Will, uh, can I just ask you what we have in uh, reserved for that funding?
Uh, in the report, I believe it says two hundred and twenty-three thousand.
Okay.
Uh, that is being drawn from Forestry from uh, some of the line sales, as well as uh, council's initial deposit of fifty thousand.
Thank you. Any other comments? Uh, councillor White.
I just want to say that this is an excellent report and it's given us a lot of food for thought for the future. Um. I definitely agree that possibly it will need to be expanded. That's an excellent idea. Um, and I just really appreciate the update. Thank you so much.
We have a motion to uh, receive.
Yes, we have a motion moved by councillor Rick Owen, seconded by councillor Casey Owens. Be it resolved that report number two thousand twenty-two D E V zero zero five entitled Community Improvement Plan Update be received.
All in favor? Motion carried. Item six point seven, Fednor Funding Agreement uh, for the Kirkland Lake Airport, Richard Charbonneau Waste Management. Manager. And Will.
If you will, through you, your counsel, I'll take the lead because I deal with the funding agencies and then Mr. Charbonneau can deal with anything on the airport. Uh, specific to that, the, this is one of those. Lightning bolts that come out of the sky every so often and land somewhere well deserving. We don't get airport funding. It doesn't, it doesn't exist for us because we don't have scheduled uh, services. The federal government, when uh, at the height of COVID, did put out a program, it was uh, primarily targeting airports that had services. Um, or scheduled services. Later on, uh, towards fall. They began opening it up for other small airports. We had basically a two or three day turnaround time on that. We put an application in based on. The uh, capital projections and identification of needs. One of the. Concerns that we have, and I highlighted it in the report, is that there's an exceptionally short turnaround uh, period here. We get the funding and it has to be incurred or spent by March twenty, uh, March thirtieth. That will be a challenge and that is why we put in uh, items that. Possibly will have a higher turnaround period, uh, hangar door, winter maintenance equipment, all stuff that will have to be addressed. But that's what we're trying to address it uh, within this. And it is possible that it may not work. There, there are still supply chain issues. Um, there will be other challenges, but it is a once in a long time opportunity, so we do want to pursue it. Um. I'll turn it over to Mr. Charbonneau for any commentary on the airport itself. That's you, Rick. There you go.
Any, any questions from anybody or?
Mr. Ivanov has a question there.
Yeah, I know. I just want to say that, you know what, getting a, a million bucks is a, or nine hundred thousand dollars is a godsend for uh, for the airport. We've been talking about how to get some funding for that. Uh, we've been talking about mothballing the, the airport. Uh, it's not often that uh, we see a gift horse like this. Uh, I think, you know what, Wolf, you did a great job. Uh. Uh, Richard, you know, you've done a admirable of uh, getting us a bit of, bit of money. Uh, and ninety cents on the dollar is uh, even, uh, it's not free money, but it's damn close. Thank you.
Agreed. Any other comments?
Mr. Owens has a, uh, his hand up.
Rick? Oh, the other one, Owens, 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 S, 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 anyway, no, beside the point. Uh, you said the turnaround's pretty sure on this one, so if we went ahead with buying the truck and the loader, it. Is it like the loader and truck in hand or a commitment or a signed agreement with a supplier saying, okay, this is what we're buying? We, we are, we get them when we get them, but we will be spending the money.
Yes, uh, we asked that question of Fednor and they came back and said incurred or spend. Incurred is open always to bureaucratic interpretation, but uh, normally it does mean that you have made a commitment.
Okay.
It's really important because as I say, if there's uh, challenges in uh, fulfilling the contracts for the equipment, at least then. It's on the books and we can argue to hold it.
Okay, sounds good.
And sorry, but uh, any purchases before we make them, we'll confirm again with Fednor to make sure that there are no issues.
Yeah.
Okay. Richard, anything else to report?
Nothing at all. It's all right there. This is, you know, we have the uh, we have a few items that we'd like to pursue, which is the, the winter maintenance equipment. Being a loader and a snow blower, uh, the installation of a car lock system for fueling. That'll enable aircraft that come in after hours to, to fuel themselves. Um. From of the mindset, you build it, they may come, uh, especially throughout the warmer months. Um. Uh, some efficiency upgrades to the, to the terminal building would be greatly beneficial. It uh, is expensive to heat. Um, um, so we're, we're just uh, we're hopeful that we can. You know, race, race, race around this and then, and actually take advantage of it before, you know, if we lose it, because I don't think we'll ever see it again.
Definitely. Okay. Any other comments from councillors? None noted. We have a motion to receive the report.
Thank you, your worship. Uh, I have a motion here moved by councillor Eugene Ivanov, seconded by councillor Rick Owen. Be it resolved that report number two thousand twenty-two D E V zero zero six entitled Kirkland Lake Airport Ratty Funding Agreement be received. And that mayor and clerk be authorized to execute an agreement with the Federal Economic Development Agency for Northern Ontario Fednor. For funding under the regional airport trans- transportation initiative. Or up to nine hundred thousand dollars towards renovations and equipment upgrades at the Kirkland Lake Airport. And that staff be directed to include the municipal share of the project to a maximum of one hundred thousand in the two, uh, two thousand twenty-two capital budget.
All in favor? Motion carried. Item uh, six point eight, verbal report from Lloyd Crocker, Treasurer.
Thank you, your worship. Good evening, everybody. I uh, just thought I might like to. Take a moment and, and check in with you to kind of give you an idea of, of where we are and uh. Just talk to a couple of points here. So if you can bear with me, I'm just going to read a couple of items off. And then I'd be very open to any questions or comments. Um, the budget is going to be prepared on the basis of uh, levels consistent with prior years for service and. And projected changes in levels of service. Um, any anticipated initiatives that were required or based on your service reviews recently. You've, you've been through quite a few of them and there's been quite a bit identified opportunities, we'll call them, but they're going to cost some money. Um, we're going to try to attempt to balance these, any, any shortfalls. Um, especially, I guess, concerning COVID and, and you just heard a presentation about the pressures that are being felt in just, you know, obtaining equipment, but. Those are being felt across the board in all kinds of areas. Prices are going up. There's just uh, no way to avoid it at this point, but anyways. Uh, we're going to make our best efforts to, to balance that off with those increased costs. We're going to make an effort to benchmark any increases that we see in the budget to, you know, either to the uh, consumer price index. Or any other economic indicators or even, even some of the union agreements. We're going to certainly be taking that into account. The, the already committed increases and, and anything else that we see along those lines. Um. There's uh, there's kind of one thing that I was wanting, you know, so basically what I'm saying is we're going to be consistent with the past. We're going to try and keep the numbers, you know, in line with what we're seeing for price increase that we know are going to happen. We can't avoid them. Um, but in the, in the last year, you guys made an effort to, to uh, keep those tax rates in line. And, and part of that effort was a very large drawdown from your working capital reserve. And I don't need an answer or anything like that from you at this point. But um, I'd like you to kind of keep that in mind if you, if you're going to take the same tact, it, it would, it would reflect directly on what we're doing here. Or whether or not, you know, we get, we get to the bottom or we're kind of just trying to, you know, control the rate. Um, there's a couple of, I, I've put together a very rough timeline, keeping in mind I've been here a couple of weeks now. So I've spent most of my time trying to get a handle on, on our lovely software here and, and. Some of the old budget figures and stuff you've been using, trying to get some consistency from year to year. So you're looking at the same kind of things you're used to seeing. Um, but, you know, that's basically my warning to you that we're, we're a little bit behind where. You know, you started out last year. I think we'll begin finishing better than last year based on my, my best guess at this point. Uh, but it's going to take probably the rest of February and a very large chunk of March to, to get some figures together and have the senior management team review them and. You know, come up with something that's, you know, presentable to council. Um, so that would be, you know, probably, I see you have a council leading April fifth. That would probably be the, the council meeting that you would see the, the, the draft of the budget. Um, it would include capital and stuff, stuff like that at that point. Um, depending on how many changes and how much uh, feedback we get and how much direction you give us. We could probably turn that around for the next council meeting, make the adjustments or any, any kind of take into account comments. And then you'd have essentially a final budget on the nineteenth, not necessarily for passing of the tax rates, but certainly. Where everybody agrees that this is where we're spending our money and. And then uh, so, you know, you have a May third meeting as well, which could, is probably a good timeline for getting the tax rates finalized. And it comes out before, you know, we do the second issue of any of the, the tax bills and water, water and wastewater. Um, that's really, I just needed a couple of minutes to kind of say, you know, that's where we're approaching it right now and uh. Like I said, I'd be happy to take any questions or comments at this point.
Well, we certainly appreciate the update, Lloyd. Uh, I think we're on the same wavelengths uh, as, as we were as last year. Uh, and uh, look forward to uh, your report.
You had a couple of hands up.
Okay, I can't see them, so go ahead.
Sorry, uh, councillor White and councillor Owen.
Okay.
Thank you, gentlemen. Um, I just have a question. We've struggled in the last four years. I know it's been the desire of this council to have more forward thinking. Um, in, in everything we do, especially budget, we, we tend to have budgets that are delivered quite late in the year. Is there anything that we can do, um, while we're planning for this year's taxes? To set us up for a budgeting process for the next year?
Yeah, so I guess the, the short answer is I expect it to be better because I'll have a year under my belt. I'll be able to start this process much earlier than I am right now. That's the first, you know, comment, I guess. The second one is I did see in, in one of the funding envelopes that we're looking at right now, it's already committed funding. There was some money there for budget software and, and training and stuff like that. I don't know enough details yet to say whether or not that's, you know, an immediate type of item or whether it fits in that funding envelope in the timeline they expect. Um, but there was a project that had something earmarked for that. Um, so. You know, getting budgeting software that somehow ties into bottom would probably speed up the process as well. And, and if the dollars are already there, it'd be great. We just, I, I don't know enough details about that project right now to say it's happening, you know, right away.
Excellent. Thank you very much, sir.
Councillor Owen?
Yes, um, it's, it's been uh, one of my big issues uh. Since I've been on council is that the budgets are always uh, always later and later. Now, this year, I, I was going to congratulate you because it seems like, I think, we're ahead of schedule from what we were last year. Um, and I also appreciate the fact that you are brand new on the job. Um, and that we've had many staff changes throughout the year. Uh, so, I'm, I'm happy with that schedule. Under the circumstances, I think that that's a very ambitious schedule and I hope we can meet it. Also, um. From what I've been able to ascertain. Um, every year, the budget seems to be done sort of in isolation of future. Um, it's sort of like, let's meet the, the next year's needs and it doesn't. I don't get the impression that we're looking at, say. Um, where we want the town finances to be in five years or ten years. Um, we're just kind of putting a budget together to get through this year and then to get through next year. And. I'm not familiar with how five-year plans go and ten-year plans go, but I know even with personal finance, you take out a mortgage and. You know, you, you, you set aside so much money every paycheck so that when that mortgage is paid, then you have the house. You, you, you don't buy the house and say, oh, I can make the payments for one year. And I'm hoping that. And I'm, I, I'm not just suggesting it for this year because circumstances are such that we can't. It, it would be impossible to do. But I'm hoping in future budgets that we're able to sort of create a five-year plan. And then review it at the end of the five years and, and a ten-year plan. Um, that way I think we can truly move ahead. So, thank you very much and, and I hope we're able to keep that uh, that schedule. I find it very ambitious and. And I'm, I'm quite happy with it, so, under the circumstances, so thank you.
It, it is ambitious. I won't pretend it isn't. Um, but, you know, I'm spending, you know, a large portion of my time on it. And uh, you know, we'll do our best.
Okay. Councillor Shaba?
Yeah, thank you very much, uh, Lloyd, for this update and it's really refreshing. Uh, to uh, hear your optimism about uh, this uh, budget. I mean, you indicated that. It's, it's very likely that we'll finish better than last year, so I'm hopeful that we will. So uh. Uh, let's hope we will. Thank you.
Yeah, uh, again, you know, it's, it's a tentative schedule. It's, you know, I based it basically on what, on what the, the. What happened last year and also what was planned last year. It's not as ambitious as last year's plan. But it's more ambitious than what you actually, you know, got to. Um, so, and, and again, you know, it's, 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 it's something we're shooting for anyways.
Yeah, we ran a surplus last year, so I'm, I'm sure you have that, so that's what we're told, so. When you say it's better than, will be hopefully better than last year, so hopefully we'll at least run another surplus. I don't know. We'll see.
And, and, and that, and that ties into, to what councillor Owen was saying is, you know, if you, if you plan for things like this more than one year out. Then you have some opportunities, you know, both in capital, replenishing reserves. Uh, there's all kinds of stuff that, the comment I made about the budget software, those with those, that's what those software is specializing in. Um, you guys just recently purchased the, the asset management software. And, and that's a very large portion as well of, of this kind of, you know, small municipality to a budget. Usually when things go off the rails or when you get caught off guard. It's those sudden, you know, something breaks and there's no, you know, it'll cost you twice as much to fix it. So, um, you know, we're, we're trying to, the, the goal obviously would be to try and tie that. The asset management stuff into your, into your future plans. And uh, you know, it's, it's not there yet from what I understand, but it's, it's moving.
Okay, thank you very much, Floyd, for the update. Uh, we have a motion to receive that report.
Yes, we have a motion moved by councillor Casey Owens, seconded by councillor Lad Shaba. Be resolved that the verbal budget update be received.
All in favor? Motion carried. Item number seven, uh, consideration of notices of motion.
Six nine, six nine.
Six nine?
There's six nine, I believe. I wrote it down.
Yeah, we had, yeah, we had an address for COVID update.
COVID nineteen update, yeah.
In your worship for you to counsel, it is feeling a bit more normal in places around town that could welcome patrons back into their establishments. I thought I'd take this opportunity to provide reminders to members of the public through our media sources of the requirements that are imposed on our operations. If a resident is entering a facility that requires proof of vaccination, such as a community complex, it must be provided by way of a QR code. The proof of vaccination slips received when your dose was given are not permitted anymore. A QR code stands for quick response, and it's actually a square matrix barcode that has information embedded into it. Any facility requiring the QR code has to have a device that reads the code. The most common device is a phone or a tablet. The app that we use is called Verify Ontario, and it's utilized to read the barcode. So once it's read, it either gives you a nice green checkmark or it's going to give you a yellow caution or it's going to give you a red X. So if you are up to date with your full vaccination and it's entered into the system, it will give you a green checkmark and that's what's required for entry into the facility. If your second dose was less than 14 days ago or you've only received one dose or perhaps one without a province, you'll either get red or yellow for the green checkmark to come in. The screener then has to make sure that the name that comes up on their app is actually the person standing in front of them. So they have to show ID. So the ID, they'll look at the name on the ID, they'll look at the name on the app and make sure that the person hasn't borrowed someone's barcode. So if you come to the community complex or if you go to a restaurant for in-person dining or if you go to the bingo hall or if you go to a meeting place, you have to bring two things with you. You have to bring your QR code and you have to bring proof of ID. What is valid ID? So if you're 18 or over, you have to have something that has your name and your birthdate on it. Doesn't have to have your picture. So a lot of people 18 and over are bringing driver's license. You can bring a a birth certificate, you can bring a passport, you can bring another piece of valid ID as long as it has birthdate and name on it. Picture is not required. We know that's tough for the for the youth and right now 12 and over have to bring proof of vaccination through the QR code and proof of ID. So the province is allowing 12 to 17-year-olds to bring a picture of their ID. So mom or dad can photocopy a birth certificate or a health card or a passport or whatever it may be, and they can have a paper copy or if they've got a phone, you can take a picture and store it on the phone. So the province is only allowing this for the 12 to 17-year-olds. So we know it's a piece, something you have to bring with you. But I always kind of relate to it when you just turn 19 in the province of Ontario and you want to go to a bar legally. They're not going to say, oh, look at my picture. You have to have your ID with you. So it's the same kind of idea. So bring your original. If you have a medical exemption, this is a change as well, you still need a QR code. So in the past, you were able to bring in um a doctor's note that basically said why you had a medical exemption. So the province is trying to preserve uh people's privacy. So now what you do is if you have a valid medical exemption, you go to your nurse practitioner or your doctor and you ask them to provide the information to the health unit. The the health unit then upload your information into the provincial database and you, just like everybody else, will download a QR code. So if you have a valid medical exemption, it now comes in the form as a QR code. So our screeners just scan the QR code, you get the green checkmark and you get to come in. So in terms of keeping people's private information private, it does work in that way. So at this time at the community complex, we'll focus on that one. If you're 12 years of age or older entering for anything, whether it's swimming, skating, hockey, spectator, whatever it is, you have to provide your QR code and you have to provide some sort of proof that you are who say you say you are. Now, this is interesting. If you're turning 12 in 2022, the province is giving you a little bit of a leeway. You have 84 days or 12 weeks to get yourself vaccinated. So if you're just turning 12 right now and all of a sudden you think, holy smokes, I have figure skating and I don't have my vaccination, you can start your process now and you've got that 84-day or 12-week leeway. How to get your QR code? So the easiest way is to use the computer, go to covid uh dash nineteen dot Ontario dot C A website. So it's the, if you just go in your Google web bar and just type in covid QR code, it'll come right up and you just enter the props. So you're going to need your health card information, you're going to need your date of birth and your postal code that's associated with your health card. So if you've, we've had people come up with us, it's not working. So sometimes if you've moved, but you might have to use your old postal code, so whatever is associated with your health card. Then you get your own personal barcode that you can either save it to your phone, you can email it to yourself or you can print it out and take it with you. So we can accept either something electronic for the QR code or we can accept a piece of paper that has a QR code. You don't have access to a computer, Tech Centennial Library can certainly assist you, Service Ontario can certainly assist you. If that's not going to work, you can certainly call the provincial vaccine contact center. So you can go online to get that. If you don't have a computer to go online, give us a call at the complex, we'll give you the number. And you can actually request that your vaccine certificate gets mailed to you. So then you'll actually have a a letter with your vaccine certificate on it. So that's kind of all the changes that people have to remember. We've been doing a lot of education the last two days. So the other area that's seen changes and will continue to see changes is with the active screening forms. So if you think of it when you go into the grocery store, no one stands and and asks you questions, but you are supposed to self-screen. So am I feeling okay? Do I have a cough? Do I have a cold? Those types of things. I feel fine, you go to the grocery store. At some places such as the community complex, active screening is required, which means you have to stop prior to entering the main bowels of the facility and either fill something out online or by paper. So something changed in the last little while. So the first question now is, do you have both vaccinations? So to enter our facility, the answer is yes, but we kind of get into habit and we just keep going, click, 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 no, 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 because you know you're feeling great. So you think all the answers are no. But now the first answer is yes. So we've had a lot of people that have been flagged on their first question. Now that being said, the province today um uploaded to their provincial website brand-new screening questions to echo what public health has been recommending the last few weeks. So we will take the time to update these screenings again. So you're going to notice another change. So I just just remind you, when when it looks a little bit different and we'll try to maybe put a date on it or something, take a second to read the questions. It'll just stop you from getting flagged at our front desk and having to go back in and enter. But if you do, that's okay. We we help you along. Um, just to to conclude, I'm sure that all the businesses that have been allowed to reopen this week um are very thankful and I want to say thank you so much to our patrons. We are working very hard to be able to provide all of our services very safely to you and we're really happy that we have our doors open once again. That concludes the COVID update.
Any questions or comments? None noted. Thank you very much, Bonnie. We have a notice to receive.
Thank you, worship. I have a motion here moved by Counselor Stacy White, seconded by Counselor Rick Owen. Be it resolved that the verbal COVID nineteen update be received.
All in favor? Motion carried. Item seven, consideration of notices of motion. I believe Lad, uh, you had a consideration of notice of motion.
Uh, yes, yes, I I believe uh Sean said he's going to uh refer that. Um, it's just, Sean, do you have that? Or do you want me to read what I have?
Yes, Counselor Shaba, I can go ahead. I I do have it here. So Counselor Shaba put forth the following. Um, a notice of motion um to consider a small playground uh in the in Shapewas.
Okay, duly noted. Any other notices of motion? None noted. Our introduction reading and consideration of bylaws. Item eight point one.
Thank you, worship, and through you to counsel. Um, first bylaw, moved by Counselor Eugene Ivanoff, seconded by Counselor Stacy White. Be resolved the following bylaw be read a first, second, and third time numbered passed, signed by the mayor and the clerk and the seal of the corporation be affixed there too. Bylaw number twenty-two zero one one being a bylaw to amend the underground pipe crossing agreement with the ONTC.
All in favor? Motion carried. Item eight point two.
Have a motion moved by Counselor Eugene Ivanoff, seconded by Counselor Rick Owen. Be resolved that the following bylaw be read a first, second, and third time numbered passed, signed by the mayor and clerk and seal of the corporation be affixed there too. Bylaw number twenty-two zero one two being a bylaw to amend Schedule A of bylaw twenty-one zero four eight, a bylaw to set municipal water and municipal uh wastewater rates.
All in favor? Motion carried. Item eight point three.
Have a motion moved by Counselor Lad Shaba, seconded by Counselor Rick Owen. Be it resolved that the following bylaw be read a first, second, and third time numbered passed, signed by the mayor and the clerk and the seal of corporation be affixed there too. Bylaw number twenty-two zero one three being a bylaw to execute agreement with the Federal Economic Development Agency for Northern Ontario, Fednor for funding under the Regional Air Transportation Initiative RADI.
All in favor? Motion carried. Item eight point four.
I have a motion moved by Counselor Casey Owens, seconded by Counselor Stacy White. Be it resolved that the following bylaw be read a first, second, and third time numbered passed, signed by the mayor and the clerk and the seal of the corporation be affixed there too. Bylaw number twenty-two zero one for being a bylaw to appoint a clerk for the town of Kirkland Lake.
All in favor? Motion carried. Welcome, Jennifer. Uh, questions from council to staff? None noted. Uh, councillor reports. I've got a uh councillor white or no, sorry, councillor Owen.
Yeah, thank you. Um, I was driving along government road and I got behind one of the trucks that was protesting. Um, I was uh most upset because uh I didn't refle- I didn't think it reflected good on our community. Uh, the trucker was flying a flag upside, a Canadian flag upside down that was bouncing off the road. And I just don't see any place for that. Uh, I'm all in favor of the right to protest and freedom of speech. But uh my only uncle was lost at at sea during the Second World War. Um, my father's life was cut short as direct result of his service um in World War Two. And I just wish people would realize um that we live even during COVID times in one of the freest and most open societies in the world and that we should cherish that and and thank our veterans for giving us the right to protest and and not to do things that uh insults the country. And uh I know some people may say this is not a municipal issue, but it did happen in our community and I did find it quite upsetting. So I'm just passing that on. And I know that the people in Kirkland Lake certainly uh respect the flag and respect the country and have the utmost respect uh for all those who have served in many, many ways to keep our community uh free and democratic. So thank you.
Thank you. Uh, since we haven't met for about three or four weeks, I'll just give you some quick updates on the community uh safety and well-being plan. Um, you'll notice uh Bonnie, I believe, and I believe it's on Facebook as well, there's a survey to be completed by uh the community for input into that plan. Um, we encourage everybody to to use that. Um, the development uh program, I got an update from them uh late Friday, so it was a little late for communication, but just to cover it off. Uh, the the plan's development is being uh progressing well. This the project uh met on January the seventeenth in the second meeting. Working group uh is is started. Uh, based on the input, uh, some of the items that are being focused on are health and well-being, housing, employment and uh economy, poverty, community safety and uh environment and and sustainability. Uh, also, uh, just a couple of updates. We let, we met with the ONR about a month ago and we uh uh with the president. And uh at that time, we expressed our concerns of not having a uh uh a stop at the Swastika uh spot. And uh we did put something in writing and sent it in. I did get a call from her and she said, this is, the the first report is the initial report. And she says not to be worried that we are considering uh Kirkland Lake. Uh, and she's going to take it forward. So hopefully we'll get something positive out of that. Um, also, uh, there was a request of from the to the uh management, I believe, for Kim Ross uh lighting at the pond. Now, we did get a bunch of funding that we uh allotted elsewhere. Uh, the pond wasn't the priority. Uh, we think uh the part of the uh the lighting system at at the at the pond uh may be included in the KL Gold's uh plan to expand the pond. So uh that's our latest hope on that as as we go forward. Anyway, I just wanted to give you those updates because we haven't had a chance to talk to each other in the last three or four weeks. Uh, Counselor Shaba?
Okay, uh, thank you very much, your worship. Uh, I remember I recall that I brought this issue up a few meetings ago about uh garbage uh liters, uh garbage along the Archer Drive. Pardon me? Can you hear me?
You're on mute.
No, I'm not, am I? Hello?
You're on mute, Vlad.
I don't think I am from I.
I I can hear you.
I can hear lad.
I can hear lad.
Yeah, uh, okay, I'll just make it very brief. Well, I've had a lot of people approach me and I walk Archer Drive all the time, including winter time. I uh I hope some of you guys take the time to drive through Archer Drive. Uh, you see, this is for the very first time that I see a lot of garbage all over the place in winter time. I mean, it's a given in in summertime, coffee cups, you name it. But all of a sudden now, just just take a ride, you see uh garbage here and there along Archer Drive. I'm not too sure uh what could be done, but maybe a public's announcement about this. Uh, because it is, you know, you, people approach the town from Archer Drive sometimes and that's not a good image for us to, for anybody coming to town to see firsthand. That does not look good for our community. Like I said, I've never seen a lot of garbage in the winter time on top of the snow, just 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 drive past it. So I I really hope that uh this issue maybe uh can be addressed in future because uh uh a lot of, some of us that walk that uh area, we just want to enjoy. uh, area, we just want to enjoy it and 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 I I think it's good for everybody to keep it clean. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? We have a motion to receive.
Yes, thank you, your worship. Uh, we have a motion moved by Counselor Eugene Ivanoff, seconded by Counselor Casey Owen. Be it resolved that the verbal updates from members of council be received.
All in favor? Motion carried. We have a motion move into closed.
Yeah, we have a motion by Counselor Rick Owen, seconded by Counselor Lad Shaba. Be resolved that council move into a closed session pursuant to section two thirty-nine-two to discuss personal matters about an individual, identifiable individual, including municipal or local board employees.
All in favor? Motion carried.
Okay, we're going to go ahead and, uh, I want to thank everybody. So it's five fifty-three, we're going into closed. Just give me a second here. Okay, you can go ahead. Thanks.
Uh, we rise, uh, from closed into, uh, open session, regular meeting. Uh, any matters from closed session to be discussed? None noted. Confirmation bylaw?
Thank you, your worship. So we have a motion removed by Counselor Stacy White, seconded by Counselor Lad Shaba. Be resolved that the following bylaw be read in read a first, second, and third time numbered passed, signed by the mayor and clerk and the seal of corporation be affixed there too. Bylaw number twenty-two zero-one-five being a bylaw to confirm the proceeding proceedings of council at its meeting held February first, two thousand twenty-two.
All in favor? Motion carried. Motion to adjourn.
A motion, uh, moved by Counselor Eugene Ivanoff, seconded by Counselor Rick Owen. Be it resolved that council adjourn the February first, two thousand twenty-two regular meeting of council.
All in favor? Motion carried. Adjourned.
Thank you, everybody.
Thanks, Sean.
Thanks.
Thanks, folks.